Thank you for joining us this evening for the May twentieth, two thousand and twenty five Monastreino Regular City Council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For tonight's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation with this regular city council meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear the council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and enabled to speak to the council. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, when we are not all in the same room, all votes at this meeting must be taken by roll call.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to call this meeting to order and would everybody please stand and we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shannon here. Councilmember Mecha Chuck is absent. Vice Mayor Elahi.
Present.
Mayor Craig.
Here. All right, orders of the day. Are there any requests to change the orders of the day? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. Does anybody have any presentations or are we receiving any presentations? Does anybody have any announcements that they would like to make? All right, so this brings us to oral communications. At this point, anybody can speak about any topic that is not on the agenda for three minutes and we have a hand raised. In chamber, former mayor and councilmember Lon Allen.
Well, I'm here to publicly thank Avery Goldschneider for his many years of thoughtful and caring service to our community. I first met Avery in two thousand and ten when he and I went on site and architectural commission together. And I found that, well, he was a very soft spoken person. He critically analyzed things. He's an engineer and he always presented in a very thoughtful manner. And I think it's a loss to the city that he won't be able to continue. But I did want to publicly recognize his fact of contribution.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody online that would like to speak?
No hands are raised. Oops. No hands are raised.
Okay, great. So that brings us to written communications. Do we have any written communications?
There are no new written communications.
All right, very good. So we are on the consent calendar. And would anybody like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Sir Mayor, I'm sorry, just to clarify, we did provide two updated documents on the dais for you. One is for item number seven. And that's just clarifying some language that was added to section one B and also to section eight.
Okay.
And then we also provided you with an update on the warrant list that's clarifying some of the expenses on one of the line items.
Okay. But you didn't fix the spelling here. But that's okay.
Which one?
Mutual. Or is that, is that a legal term that I don't know?
What are you wish to know?
On the warrant list.
Oh. I don't know.
Oh, that's okay. At least my dictionary didn't have that one. I guess we're pulling item seven. That's the rule city manager.
You don't have to, but you can.
Yeah, this is, this is what it's. Would you like to pull item seven? Okay, we will do that.
I'd like to pull item number five.
And item number five. Okay. And at this point, is there anybody online wishing to speak or pull a item?
All hands are raised.
Okay, so is there anybody in chamber who would like to speak on any of the items that we're handling as a whole except for items five or seven?
Did you remind us with five and seven?
So item five is to consider a resolution setting appropriation limits for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six and adopting amended appropriation limits from fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, and twenty four, twenty five. And then item seven is the approval of the city manager employment agreeing agreement with Diana Perkins. And so seeing nobody wishing to speak in chamber or online, I will entertain a motion to approve items two, three, four, and six on the consent calendar.
So.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Hi. Okay, so that brings us to item number five. And do we have a staff report available for this one?
Yes, thank you. I wonder if that was working. On the California constitution, the California constitution requires that each city set an appropriation limit annually prior to the induction of the next fiscal year's budget. On this limit, this limits the amount of tax proceeds that can be appropriated in any fiscal year. And the calculations are based on the actual appropriations in the base year, which was fiscal year eighty six, eighty seven, and has been increased each year based on population growth and inflation factors. On the appropriation limits that were set for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four and for twenty four, twenty five were miscalculated. So this resolution corrects those two calculations as well as provides the appropriation limit for the upcoming fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. And that concludes the staff report and I'm happy to answer the questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff?
Yes, thank you. And so when I was looking at this, I understand that there's a calculation that's done for the maximum appropriations and where I got hung up was on the last part of it of the resolution, item number four, that says council does hereby establish the appropriations under the limit for the following fiscal years. Can you just give me a little background on where those numbers come from, especially for twenty five, twenty four, twenty five, twenty five, twenty six?
So those numbers are the difference between items two and three above. So the.
Okay, so it's just the difference that we're just saying, correct, we are under this by this amount.
Correct, under the actual limit versus the amount of our budget that's subject to the limit. Which in our case is the whole thing.
Thank you. That was, that was easy. Thank you.
I didn't see a problem. Trying to figure that out.
The language could have been clearer. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm looking, did the agenda change since it was posted? Because item five online says consider adoption of a resolution declaring hazardous vegetation a public nuisance. Online.
The one I'm looking at online says the correct. Me too.
Oh. Let me get a refresh. Well, that's okay. I'm going by the paper one anyway. Yeah, that was really strange. I, I rephrased it. It came up. All right, sorry about that. Browser doing weird things tonight. So this brings us to item number seven. Oh yeah, we need to vote on number five. Is there anybody in chamber wishing to speak on item five? Seeing none, anybody online?
No hands are raised.
Okay, who would like to make a motion for item five?
I'd like to move that the item number five.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye. And now that takes us to item number seven, approval of the city manager employment agreement with Diana Perkins. So can we have a staff report, please?
That would be from me.
That would be from you.
She could do it, but.
I have a contract and I'll sign it and you can vote on it.
So as the council is aware, Diana has been working as the interim city manager since September and the council has offered her the permanent position. This contract documents that it includes her salary, her benefits and standard language. The salary will be two hundred and forty five thousand dollars beginning effective tomorrow and then it will be increased to two hundred and sixty thousand effective July first, two thousand and twenty six. She will continue to serve as the city planner and she will be in charge of long-term planning. So that is also spelled out as part of her duties under this contract. The contract provides for benefits that are consistent with what she's previously had and also consistent with other employees and staff is recommending approval.
All right, thank you.
And I want to just clarify, we did make two changes, two clarifications. Councilmember Elahi or Vice Member Elahi was interested in, that would be under section one B. Just a clarification regarding that no council member, no individual council member can direct the city manager, but they can if authorized by the full council. And then the other change was under section eight regarding the indemnification, that the city is not obligated to defend and indemnify Diana if she is responsible for conduct outside the course and scope of her employment as the city manager.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff?
Yeah, thank you for drafting it. I think it, Diana, right, from a board almost, I guess we can formally do it. But it's, it's great. I mean, you were just an excellent planning guy. You were too excellent for me. I wanted to keep you there for a while. You did such a great job as a planner, but I know you're a very good city manager also. But I just wanted to get some clarification and I appreciate the changes you've made. On A, B, I wanted to be expressing what you just said, that we're not going to indemnify. The reason for indemnification is obvious. Today we have under warrant list, we paid eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to indemnify somebody for something that you probably shouldn't have had to, but that's neither here nor there. I just want to make sure we don't indemnify somebody when they're not acting in the scope of the employment. That's what you said, but the language is kind of limited. It only says illegal or criminal acts. Can we expand that to any effort book that she's done beyond the scope of employment?
So if you look at, it should be the fourth fifth line of, sorry, paragraph B, eight B. And I thought it was red on your version. I apologize if it's not. So the, the language that was added is this, right after manager's duties, it, we added the language that said, this obligation of indemnification does not extend to any conduct of manager outside the course and scope of her employment.
Oh, frolic and detour language. Yeah.
That's good. I missed that. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that and I think that I, I know there's nothing you're gonna do. But that's covered. So I appreciate that. Thank you for making those changes.
All right. I would like to now open it up for public comment. If anybody in chamber would like to speak, yes. Former councilmember Lon Allen.
Well, I just want to commend the council for engaging Diana Perkins. I think she's done a great job in promoting from within, I think is always better because then you see someone in action rather than just someone who perhaps knows how to interview. And and I'm glad we have the heardest right from detour language.
Is there anybody online who would like to make a comment?
No hands are raised.
Okay, at this point, I would like to bring him back to council and see if there's any final comments. And if not, I will take a motion.
Yeah, there was a big comment. And again, like, because to this, I wanted to open it up, take it off the agenda so people could comment on it too. Could appreciate what has done as letting in charge of all the planning to city desk. And I think you've kind of really made it clear that you know what you're doing. Well, thank you for doing that and you look forward to having you know, saying that.
Thank you. I think you. I'd also like to make a comment.
Okay.
Just to say that since I'm the newest council member and have only been at this a few months, I meet with Diana regularly and I really appreciate, she's always has answers to my questions. She's always on top of things. I've enjoyed working with you thus far and I'm very happy that you want to be the city manager and it looks like you will be in a moment.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need a roll call vote on this?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor of making Diana our permanent city manager, please say aye.
Is that a motion?
Oh.
You don't make a motion. So you're making a second.
Okay, I made a motion. And we have second, all favor.
Aye.
Yes.
Congratulations, Diana. Thank you very much for all the hard work that you do for us every single day. All right. And now item number eight. So this is an application number two thousand and twenty three dash. Otherwise I had to recuse myself at this point. And application two thousand and twenty three dash eight zero seven three for site development permit for a new approximately fifty nine hundred ninety seven square foot two-story house and approximately nine hundred and seventy seven square feet for a detached accessory building. So who would like to start off the staff report for this one?
I will.
Thank you.
So this is an application for a site development permit, a tree removal permit, a graden use permit. The proposal, which you just mentioned, includes a new two-story house and a new detached accessory structure. The removal of thirteen trees and a grading use permit for approximately two thousand nine hundred thirty four cubic yards of cumulative grading. The proposed house does also include a basement that is approximately two thousand eight hundred forty four square feet. However, that square footage is not included in the maximum floor area allowed in the house in accordance with the zoning code. The house does have an accessory structure and both will be finished on the same on the exteriors with stucco, dark metal framed windows and a synthetic cedar shaped roof. The thirteen trees proposed for removal are all located within the area of the proposed construction. And the grading use permit is required when a project proposes cumulative grading that's over one thousand cubic yards. On the Monastreino municipal code defines cumulative grading as the amount of cut plus the amount of fill. In this case, the project proposes equal amounts of cut and fill of one thousand four hundred sixty seven cubic yards each. Meaning all grading on activities on the site will move soil around on the property. And so there will not be large hauling of soil or associated trucks. This item was heard by the site architectural commission at their May seventh meeting. During that meeting, the site architectural commission did recommend approval of the project with two conditions. One, that the two windows in the bedroom that's labeled as number four on the plans on the second floor have a sill height that's a minimum of five feet from the finished floor. There was a concern from the neighboring property owner about any privacy impacts or newer windows with a lower sill height. It's standard practice, but the commission also wanted to emphasize that for the city engineer to review the rating plans that will be submitted as part of the building permit to ensure that water, stormwater does not drain onto neighboring properties, which was also a comment that was raised during the site architectural commission meeting. So in fact, staff also recommends approval of the project. And that concludes the staff report and I'm happy to answer any.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff?
Just a question about the.
Yes, go ahead.
A question about the storm water runoff. There's not currently, it's not currently in the plans how that's going to take in there. Is that correct?
So there are preliminary rating on civil plans and rating and drainage plans. But their final detailed plans with the associated calculations will be submitted with the building permit application. Get approved.
And is it, is it part of the city's rules that any water from your property be drained in a particular manner?
Correct. The standard requirements are that any stormwater that's displaced as part of the project, that quantity of stormwater being maintained on site. Because of but the hillside nature of large, a lot of portions of Monastreino, it's not necessarily possible to all stormwater runoff onto a neighboring property. But any additional round that would occur due to the project does need to be maintained on site.
Okay, so it doesn't go to the street or anything like that either?
That's correct.
That was all my questions about them.
Okay.
Thank you. And thank you for the details provided. Obviously, one will make a concern is the number of trees that have been cut. Some of them are considered not useful, I guess, or anyone call them and don't require our approval, I guess. Perfect thing is correct. So and I went through the report to see if there was any that could be saved. Looks like almost all of them are on the property itself. So did you take a careful review on this? I'm sure you looked at it carefully to see if there was any other tree that could be saved.
Um, yes. So the trees that are proposed for removal are only those that are within the area of the proposed construction. Several of them are located in the front yard. And because of fire department requirements to put in a fire truck turnaround on the site, there is a lot of, much of the grading that's happening is in the front yard to level out that area and provide a space large enough for the driveway and fire truck turnaround. So that is part of the reason of of some of the tree removals also.
Right.
I'm just making a comment too. I just want to state that I, I did go by the property because I wanted to see what was happening with the slope and all that. And looking at the plans, I do, I can visually understand with the grading to create this ladder area towards the top in order to have this turnaround for fire truck. So that made sense to me.
Yes.
Have the neighbors given any input at all on this property?
So the one neighbor tried to from the street looking at the property, the neighbor to the left was the one who requested that the two-bedroom window sill heights be raised. And then the neighbors on the right did speak at the hearing, the site architectural commission hearing, and just wanted to emphasize the the drainage concern.
Have those been addressed?
They are with a preliminary design and then as part of the the detailed plans that are provided with the building permit application, the city engineer will review and make sure that the details of the.
So we're approving it even without?
So they have. Yes, they do have the preliminary grading plans, which have been reviewed by the city engineer. But the details in terms of the quantities of the runoff and the retention basin, sort of the calculation details will be submitted as part of the building permit application.
So does the city council have to decide that's adequate or that's the city engineer's job?
The city engineer based on the stormwater regulations, so based on standard requirements that we have.
Great, thank you.
Also, could we add something to that too?
I'm gonna give you a chance to come up in just a minute. Okay, so any other questions for staff?
Right now.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and you may speak about your project. So we come on up.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jessica Nelson.
Hi, Troy Nelson.
Hi, it's me too.
And we have a one and a three-year-old with my mom at home right now. We're very excited to join the community. And just on the subject of drainage, so our neighbors to the right, we have met with them and their moms lived there. I mean, she's one of the originals and the daughter shared a lot of insight about when it actually does rain, where the problem spots are, which was quite insightful to us. So our architect is actually on the call as well, Chris. I don't know if he wants to add anything also, but that helped us understand, you know, yeah, regulations and everything, but also realistically what to expect when the rain comes and where they've been dragging the sandbags and anyway, those details too. So we're quite aware and it's very important to us as well to make sure that we address all the drainage issues that we possibly can, not only by regulation, but also what our neighbors have shared that they've experienced over the last years.
Yeah, from what we've heard, the main concerns have been privacy and then the water drainage runoff for erosion. And that's also really something that's important to us as well. So they were really insightful on where the water is coming. It was really nice to actually meet and talk with them because they have a basement as well and they have a wall that are, that comes off our property and goes down to theirs. So it's nice to hear their experience of they have run out with sandbags from the street from actually another house up the hill that comes. So it definitely seems like it's super plausible to enhance our drainage to capture and prevent some of that. It's just nice to know about it.
Okay. That was for you. That's what we keep an eye on.
Okay. I'll use a little time to congratulate Diana. We've been, we opened our permit in two thousand and twenty three, so we've been working with her for a little while. And then our baby slowed down some of our progress, but we've tried to be really thoughtful with our design and what we've kind of come up with here. It is a lot of dirt. The numbers add up really quickly. The basement and the pool are creating a lot of that. It's really important for us all to be respectful to the neighbors and we really don't want to have any trucks going in or out. And the fire department's rules are pretty strict about wanting to have this turnaround. But that does seem like it's able to consume a lot of that fill. And then the size of the turnaround is a requirement, but also the slope down to it. So this dirt helps us satisfy that slope requirement. And the current driveway across the front yard kind of cuts diagonal across the property. And there's three retaining walls that kind of support that driveway right now that we want to try to eliminate and kind of restore some of the natural hillside that's going down into the front yard. And then the rest in the backyard helps us kind of prop up a little patio and then make it. Okay.
Go ahead. Do you have like another thirty seconds you need or?
Probably less. It seems like the backyard consumed the dirt pretty easily, just without having to, I don't think that we've changed the slope that much. It's not like it's ten feet higher or lower anywhere than it was before. And we really wanted to not have any retaining walls on the property, but keep it more natural. We love nature. And I'm sure we love the trees of Monastreino. We're super happy to be in this area. Jessica grew up in Saratoga. I grew up in Sonoma County. And then everyone that we've met so far has been, lived here thirty or forty, fifty years and we're so excited to get to go through days and we're just real excited to join this community.
Excellent. Well, welcome.
Thanks. We live in Campbell right now.
Okay.
That's awesome.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicants?
No, thank you for sharing that.
Okay, we have one question. Go ahead.
I saw on the plans that you have as part of this additional building, I think you call it like a workshop or something. Is there any chance that that would be a finished off space and made into an ADU? We encourage ADUs.
Yeah, actually, we read that. The ADU, we are planning maybe in the future, funding wise and timeline wise. So we haven't submitted anything to date, but we hope in the future to build an ADU.
To add an ADU somewhere else on the property that is part of that workshop.
Yeah. But funding wise and scope of work wise, we're focusing on the house first and then. But yes, in the future, I think, yeah. Just curious about that.
I think it will be garden workshop or like I aspire to get into woodworking, but it takes me a long time to do. I made a cutting board. It took me almost two years. Well, still.
Well, you know what? Hold off and wait for our next housing element. We've got this one taken care of.
Yeah.
Question, I understand you're gonna be planting other trees to cover for the tree that you're replacing.
Absolutely. We definitely want to build a lot of nature, like our backyard right now, we designed ourselves and I think we have over four hundred plants that we have, anyway, we're a strong advocates of nature and not a concrete.
Yeah, it's hard to tell.
What Monastreino is about.
Yeah, the minimum, I think, requirement is to replace one tree or one for one. I'm sure we'll end up far exceeding that by the time we get going, but it's hard to know until we actually see what it looks like a little bit.
Yeah, and there are fruit trees on the property right now. They're beautiful and like fully developed, which it's such a shame to get rid of those.
Especially the oak trees up there.
Yeah, there are some beautiful oak trees, a lot of really skinny. I don't think much was maintained, if I'm being honest. So it's hard to salvage what's there, but perhaps we can salvage some of the fruit trees, get the roots deep enough and replant, so.
Especially along the, on the sides, a lot of those trees are remaining. And then some of the interior trees where the house or the driveway or the back patio are, are the ones that we're going to be taking out. And then in the front, as Diana mentioned, but I think they will easily be able to repopulate those.
Sounds good. All right, very good. Any other questions for the? All right, very good. Any other questions for the applicant?
Do you have a package we give out to newcomers that come to Monastirino?
Answer your question. Um, so the Los Gatos Monastery and Police Department is, they have bags to give to new residents.
And we got a gray bag when we came to city council or we came to the office when we bought the property to get some of the rule forms. And we were given a bag with like a roadside kit and like a little park. And then, oh, that was like, yeah, that was really nice. And so we felt welcome right.
You're also keep, put on your calendar the annual picnic Monastirino does.
I think boys, they got us on the list, so we should be getting. Yeah, yeah, and she's, hopefully her daughters do.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I would like to open it to help the comment. Is there anybody in the chamber wishing to speak on this item? Okay, is there anybody online wishing to speak on this item?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Uh, this is Chris Spalding, the architect. I I just wanted to let you know that I'm here if you have any questions for me.
Okay, do we have any questions for the architect?
I do not.
Okay, good. All right, I think we're good, Chris. Thank you. All right, so at this point, I'll bring them back to council for discussion, a motion.
Uh, I I I moved to accept the plan as proposed.
Okay, and um, okay, and Kirsten, can we get help with the language of proper
Yes.
And a proper language for that motion? So that they go start building their house and not have to come back and say, sorry, we didn't, we didn't vote on it correctly.
Okay, so it is going to be uh, the motion should be a resolute to approve the resolution of the City of Scott, uh, sorry, City of Monastirino approving application twenty twenty-three dash three zero seven three for a site development permit for the construction of a new approximately five thousand nine hundred ninety-seven square foot two-story house, a new approximately ninety, nine hundred and seventy-seven square foot detached accessory structure, a grading use permit for cumulative grading of approximately two thousand nine hundred and thirty-four cubic yards and a tree removal permit to remove thirteen trees for the property located at one eight three four zero Lexington Drive.
It's just, just one, one, I'll question it probably from Diana. Uh, do they have an accessory structure for nine seven seven square foot? Is that gonna prevent them from getting an ADU permit later on?
No, it would not.
All right, thank you. Okay, somebody like to move to that second? No. So moved, so moved, okay.
I'll second it.
And I'll second it, or you'll second it. All right, let's bring this to a vote. All in favor of the project?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Congratulations. I hope your project is a success.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Another, another permit somewhere down the line, I'm sure.
Definitely.
Once you move here, please, you know, come to meetings, maybe join one of the commissions, maybe run for council. We'd love to see some participation of the, especially some of the younger people coming in.
Oh, thank you. I just had a birthday and I feel like I'm, time is going faster than I can, anyway, thank you for saying that. Good luck with your.
Okay, thank you, yeah. So we're going to move on to new business. And item number nine, sir, were you here for item number nine?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'm sorry we didn't catch you earlier because we're going to have to postpone item number nine due to the fact that two council members have to refuse themselves.
I see.
And um unfortunately, uh, there wouldn't be anybody for you to talk to.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm here for item number eight.
Oh.
The, yes.
We just talked about item number.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we just voted on it.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Good. Well, I'm here, I I was here to answer questions if you had because of Los Gatos Community Concert Association.
Oh, okay.
And um, so I was a little bit late, sorry. And anyway, if there are any questions that I could answer, but you've already voted.
Oh, sure.
Is actually gonna be heard on June third.
Okay.
Because the, we don't have enough council members to actually vote on it. So you can come back on June third.
Okay, I got an email from Bloisey and it was.
Yes, it just happened. It was supposed to be today and then we had some changes, so.
It'll be worthwhile my being here during this vote. I mean, I've already put in the written.
Oh, well, we're not gonna vote on anything. Yes, it's always worthwhile to come.
Okay.
I think so. Yeah, we would love to hear about, about your organization.
I'd be love to tell you about.
Okay, thank you. All right, so at that point, that that puts us into where's directly this thing? Here it is. Committee and commission reports. So we'll start with council member Shannon.
Um, there was supposed to have been a West Valley Sanitation District Board meeting, but that was canceled, and so I have nothing to do for it.
Okay, council member Lottie.
Give me a second.
Okay.
Put together a, ask it. Um, let's see, city's association meeting on May twentieth. There was a term, uh, city council Albert Consology appointed as a member of the Resecting Waste Reduction Commission. He was only candidate, so he was appointed in the anniversary. Uh, presentations were made by the Santa Clara County Planning Collaborative. They have uh some, the staff that supports housing and planning staff. And I'm, I'm, and the, they have consultants that help you plan your housing element and all that. And I'm wondering if, and I wanted to ask uh our city manager whether she had any chance to talk to those guys or get any benefit from them. And the reason I'm asking is they were usually funded by M C C and A VAG. Uh, but apparently their funding is getting cut off, so they're looking for funding from the fourteen jurisdictions that are in Santa Clara County. And they've come up with a budget of about five, five hundred thirty thousand dollars, I think it's a two-year budget. And they share that thing, they've kind of done their analysis and think Monastirino should pay about seven thousand dollars per year for their regular services and another five thousand for extraordinary services. Compared this to San Jose, which has to pay ten thousand and eighty-five hundred. And I pointed out to them that that was inappropriate because our population was lower than those. Yeah, and uh, so they they may look at it, but I I was still curious whether we get any help from the collaborative or not.
Um, we do. Um, the city has, or the collaborative has been working with the cities of Santa Clara County um, for at least four years and did help um with the housing element adoption process. Um, they also have some um different websites and resources that they've provided to the city to comply with different um ADU regulations that have have been imposed on cities. Um, we can look, certainly look at the details of what they're proposing. And see whether or not the extra services are necessary. They may not be, but the base services they have provided some of this.
Well, that's good to know. I'm sure they'll come back with a formal request.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to kind of get a heads up and give you a heads up on it. And uh, obviously, my, our goals would, goal would be like city association, we're only paying four thousand or five thousand, and San Jose's paying fifty grand. So there should be at least a ten to one difference or something close to that, unless as a smaller city, we use more because they may have their, certainly they have their own consultants also. So it's kind of a balancing thing, but that, that's something we need to look at. Uh, there was also a presentation by the Fire Department, Santa Clara County Firemen uh in rescue. There's a usual app, you guys might want to take it down also, it's a protect dot genesis dot com. Uh, Monastirino is in a, everybody's in a fire zone, so it tells you what fire zone you are in and that way you can check if there's any issues that are involved, because you have to be ready to get out here if you need to. Hopefully that won't happen, but still, it's a good, uh, good. Uh, the city association also into, into a executive, uh, appointed, reappointed official secretary is a the executive director for another year. And uh, there was presentation with Office of Emergency Management uh, that they're, they've qualified the next. And I'll, I'll try to give a, uh, send you guys a presentation next time. It's a good one to have, as to everything that uh needs to be done to make sure you get the most protection. So we've done that. And, oh, there's a, there's a good plan that the City of Gilmore has adopted. Right, electric officials role in emergency management, that's the one I'm gonna probably send you guys to put the agenda next time. So electric officials kind of know, uh, and probably already know somewhere, but it's, it's a nice uh, write-up they've done on it, and it's really gonna be helpful. One more, I have to talk about legislation up, legislation that were discussed. The city association has a legislative committee also there. Uh, discusses all these legislation, cities, shapes, consists of about fourteen cities, all of cities of Santa Clara County. So uh, legislature usually sends their resolution asking for support. Maybe six fifty was, uh, has to do with the housing element. They were trying to make some serious changes and a really good one would have been to eliminate or control the builder's remedy. Uh, they didn't, they didn't, just the city resolution to cancel that, uh, deleted that. So right now, it just gives us a little bit more time to uh plan and or for them to tell us what to do. Extends it from three years to two years, uh, from two years to three years. Uh, the other thing that I think might be something we should start looking at is uh if we can, we can now collaborate with other cities or other jurisdictions uh, with regard to our housing element. If so, Monastirino can't do all the two hundred or four hundred they want to build, next time we may want to seriously consider Campbell or Los Gatos or Santa Clara County to help us out, so we can spread our uh uh, housing units out, you know, instead of building them somewhere else, but we still get credit for it. So the city manager, you may want to keep that on your uh, vision platform someplace, because that, that would really be helpful, because I think that's a problem we have. We don't have any empty land. And we can only push ADU so far up to that, I think we're not already used. SB seventy-nine is a winner bill. It now requires cities to upzone. These, these are bills that are considered, never passed yet. Uh, it requires abusing of land near rail stations and rapid business lines. Uh, and then uh, there's another bill, seven fifty-three, which doesn't apply because it's a and it's used on marijuana act right now. If you have more than six cannabis plants, you could be charged with felony. They're trying to change that to fifty plants and reduce it to this demeanor, unless it's something really serious.
We do allow six.
Yeah, six is fine.
But I'm saying we did, we, we actually had a agenda item a number of years ago and
Yeah, that's the.
And voted on six.
Yeah, that's, that's what this.
Yeah. Right, Kirsten?
Yeah.
And I, I remember. We thought we were gonna be smoked out, but it didn't.
Charlie, did you have a bill number for the collaborating with other cities on the housing element? A bill number?
Yeah, six.
Is it the eighty-six fifty, the housing?
I think it's the six fifty, yeah, eighty-six fifty.
Is all part of the same.
Yeah.
Hey, was that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, um, I don't have anything to report tonight, so we will go to council member comments. We'll start with you again, council member Shannon.
Um, I don't have any comments, no.
Okay, council member Lottie?
I, I think I, I made my comments. I, and we'll send out that presentation, so you may have to that next time.
Okay, and uh, and I don't have any comments, so we'll go to the city manager report.
So just um two items. In um February of this year, council will remember on an agreement with Flock Cameras was approved for the installation of nineteen cameras throughout the city. Um, with that approval being for um the installation starting after July, so that we can use funds for next fiscal year. And although the cameras won't be installed for about six weeks, there is preparation on getting everything lined up, all the personal processes. So um, the Flock staff has obtained encouragement permits for both us here in Monastirino as well as Los Gatos for the cameras that are actually located in the town. And um, they do have all of the equipment on order and have us scheduled as soon after July first as they can for actual installation, and they expect it to only take a few weeks.
Absolutely.
So that is great news. And then um, there was an e-blast that was sent out um in social media post last week about an update to um the general plan update project. Under it, there will be a special joint meeting with the Site Architectural Commission and the City Council on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth at seven P M, and that will be to review the draft of the safety element. So the safety element will include policies and goals for wildfire preparedness and evacuations. And so the information that was sent out last week includes a link to the project website. Um, that does have some draft policies. It doesn't have the whole document yet, but there are some draft policies um, that have been put together as well as a survey. So the project uh website is monasterino G P U dot com. So if anybody would like to go there and with the information that's available so far, it is online, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Future agenda items. Does anybody have a future agenda item they'd like to introduce, talk about? All right. Okay, well then, seeing that, I will adjourn this meeting. And thank you all very much for a great night.
Thank you.
Bye, boys. Have a great night.